We can try to plan on this. So you have them use the day? They could sue and that.
Will they do that if the people come back? Everybody?
Do you tell me what to do?
I'm like, this is the worst. This is the worst.
You start now?
I know something.
Do you have anything Maria's like, nothing?
Don't you have a room?
I don't think.
Here's press on off button. Get us something down. All right. I'm going to call February 9th meeting of Christiansburg Town Council to order. As always, would we have a moment of reflection, follow the pledge to the flag? Thank you. We will stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I'm going to ask Councilman Henry Sherwater, please believe.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In future republic, the states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
I have couple. I would like to request that the items under discussion and action by mayor be separated. There is items letter C, E, and F. I know they are really separated by items, but I want to have a completely discussion about each of those items separately.
Well, we will.
Okay. And then, one thing under the minutes for the last meeting.
Can we do that one week?
The January 16th.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry.
There was just one word that I would like to change. Under the part that says consent to the agenda, when I mentioned about consenting the agenda change. It says right there that it felt that regarding the information that was provided today, that there was a failure to do process. I want that change is not really changed because I never say, I don't remember saying today, but I want that to be changed for the Minnesota previous meeting that took place because I don't remember that it was said, in any case, that it was said today. I think when the wording is on here, it shows up that it, that I'm talking about the day of January the 26th instead of being January the 12th. I talked to Tracy. Tracy, can you, can you please explain a little bit what I'm trying to tell you because I know you wrote it, the minutes? And that's not exactly what I was trying to say. I was talking about the minutes from January the 12th. I wasn't really talking about the minutes on January 26th. And when it says right there that there was failure to do process, it says provided today. It was not provided today, it was provided on January the 12th.
Well, that is approval of the minutes of January the 12th as it reflects. So if that statement was made on the 12th, then that is, that's a proper statement.
But it sounds like I made the statement on the day of the 26th.
No, it's minutes of January 12th, 2021.
Okay, so.
That's, I mean, that's, that's the date that this was inserted.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's worded correctly.
It is.
Because in my understanding, when I read the thing, it doesn't, maybe there is a translation issue over here. And for me, it just kind of reads that I'm talking about the day that I'm changing the minutes.
Well, you're just.
Yeah, okay. So it does look bad.
Change it to reflect the change on the 21st or the 12th as to what you said.
Okay.
And that's what was approved.
Okay. Just making sure. So thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight. End of consent agenda. We have approval of minutes of January 26th.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Good motion, the second. Any discussion?
Yes, I sent Ms. Henlon an email and copy counsel on it. Would request a minor revision to the minutes under section six, citizen comments. Mr. White, Ken White was here. And the last sentence, I was contacted by Mr. Rice. And he was concerned that the wording about Mr. White saying that he had obtained emails from the, from the town through FOIA, and he felt that they attacked his family. And I would make this proposal, whether it was Mr. Rice or Mr. White that contacted me. I would recommend that we take out that wording in the digital environment we're in. It could pose some long-term consequences for whoever would do that. And it doesn't really pertain to town staff or town officials. So I would just request that we take out. I sent you the wording on it, Ms. Henlon. And counsel saw it. I didn't, I didn't write it out here. I didn't pull up my email. But basically, it was a, it doesn't change the essence of the discussion. It just takes out the wording that could have some longer-term consequences, maybe even for both parties. So I think the recommendation I make is just to change the wording as I send in the email, which basically says that Mr. White has concerns, had concerns after reviewing emails that he obtained from the town.
Okay. Can we have a discussion about this?
You need a second?
What are we doing?
Okay.
Do we need a second?
Well, is there already motion and second on the table, so you know.
Well, we're under the discussion.
We're under discussion, right.
Is Mr. White in here tonight? Okay. We should not get to change the feeling about no opinion because I think Mr. White came over here and it's obviously said during the minutes, the discussion that was, that took place in here. If we were to change the minutes the way they are today, my recommendation will be for us to put in there and attach to the agenda some of the emails that took place between the two people. So people can make their own judgments. And it will not be our call, but it will be the people's call. Is that something that can be added to the agenda?
Well, like I said, I'll just leave it at that. I would make this recommendation regardless of who contacted me, either party, because of the nature of them and they do not affect, they don't involve town staff or town officials. And it's really between two individuals. So we'll see where it goes. But if, if, if there's a motion and a second on the table, approve the minutes as they are on, you know.
Is there? Sherwater, are you willing to withdraw your motion?
I understand what Brad's saying. I saw the email earlier and I'm sure Mr. Rice. But Mr. White, this, our minutes are just part of our official records. Our videos are too, and you can't go back and take off what Mr. White said. Now, if Mr. White was here and said that he, it was a moment of passionate, you know, derogatory statement, and he would like it removed from our written minutes, I would see that. But Mr. Rice, you, you'll have the floor tonight. And if you want to put a comment so we can have it in our minutes, I would invite you to do so. But without Mr. White here saying that he wanted, he would want them extracted from our written record, I'm not, I'm not going to change mine.
Okay. Is your second still in place?
Yes, it's still there.
I want to make a comment. Henry said, you know, a few weeks back, we said we want to document what's going on in here. I don't think we need to go back and be changing the minutes unless it's something that we can prove that wasn't said. But we all heard the comment that was made. And I think a part of the official record, it should stay as is.
It should be as close to the actual.
I agree. But because we stopped, we changed to one person, what are we going to do next week?
We have worked really hard and trying to make sure that those minutes reflect what is being said over here. And if we are going to start doing that, you know, what is going to keep us away from continuing to do this behavior during the next meetings?
Thank you.
I support the majority of you then.
And I'll say, Mr. Rice, you've always been honorable with what you've always presented to us, very truthful on both sides. And I've never, what Mr. White said, I've never witnessed myself. So that's my opinion on that.
And I will say, you know, just like we always hear as politicians, you know, people can say things about us that are really not true. Please don't take them too hard, so.
If there's no other discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call counsel?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop? Councilwoman Hicks?
We're just updating the minutes the way they are, correct? Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Sherwater?
Aye.
Councilman Stipe?
Aye.
Six, oh, thank you. Introductions and presentations. We have Montgomery Museum of Art and History Executive SuFAR to present home museum operations. Sue, there is a.
Tell me what to do here.
Well, once you finish, if you will sanitize the microphone, any areas.
Can I touch it?
Oh, yes, won't it?
Is it in the way? Can you hear me? I have no idea. Can you hear me?
You need to remove your mask.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Barber and council members and Mr. Winfield. It's great to be back again. It's always my pleasure to come and give you an update on what the museum is doing. Mostly, we're glad we're still there. And I just want to thank you all so much for your continued support of the museum. It's critical to our sustainability and our work in the community and in New River and beyond anymore. So we're just very grateful and we hope that you will continue to support us in the way that you have. Our garden is always wonderful. It continues to flourish under the leadership of Beth Umberger and the master gardeners. And it's become a place of real peace for the community. There's almost always someone there, even in the snow. There are people, little children, and it's a, it's a wonderful place for the community to be. Vegetables were grown this year to give to the folks in the subsidized housing around the museum. And it went on pretty much all summer. There's an exhibit on the grounds called Scenes from the Han Garden. And it's just pictures of lovely, all lovely creatures in gray colors. And it's, it's a neat exhibit. We also have a cow. And it's in honor of the drone, so it's a winged cow. And she's grazing happily on the west lawn. You should come and see her. The new, the newest, the most, most history exhibit is called With Our Compliments. And it's a collection of articles from novelties that businesses used to give away. Some are really lovely and all very useful. I mean, they gave china plates and all kinds of interesting things. A second main exhibit has just opened and it's really worth your time to come see. It's called Forty Five, Montgomery County and Forty Five Objects. And it looks at the history of the county of 245 years in forty five objects. And these are some things that you haven't seen before. They've not been exhibited. Some are loaned, interesting things. N L Bishop's police uniform is there. It looks like he was 12. It's just the tiniest little thing. We have a coin silver pitcher that was given to Nicholas Chevalier when he ended his term at the church, a Christiansburg Presbyterian church. And of course, the coverlet that's now quite famous, so it's been all over the newspapers, made by a slave in Christiansburg. News has picked up on these things and two, two stations, Fox and W S L S have come to do interviews. And they were on last night. So we're feeling real famous for what we do over there in our small place. Even with COVID, we were open to visitors except for the three months of forced closure. We've had, we had to eliminate a couple of art exhibits, but other than that, we've been in business as usual. And we've had quite a few visitors. It's been really interesting. So during this time of closure and COVID and we are so non-technical in, in our museum. And we've, we've been laughing at ourselves as we've learned some things we didn't know we could do or could deal with at all. Our staff person, Becky Novy, had begun working on a project. It's called Education to Go. And it's a series of kits that go into elementary school students, teaching them or letting, having them learn about past and present in Montgomery County, map skills, and the Industrial Revolution. So we've got this program and it's, it's, it's looking good. And the next, the next section that's going to come is in the works is a partnership with Christiansburg Institute, where we're looking at the institute and the African-American community in Montgomery County. That, that'll probably be next year, but it's in the works. So here's this program and the schools now closed. We can't get it to students. And so we partnered with, it's V G Engage. They, they work with nonprofits and community events. And they have converted it to be delivered virtually. So we now have something of use that when, when everything happened, we thought, well, we've spent a lot of time on this and it won't be anywhere. But we, we're going to be able to use it. It was actually chosen to be presented at the state conference of the Virginia Association of Museums this March. So we're very excited about that. Also during our closure, we thought, well, we need to be seen, we need to be alive. So we have a video equipment that we never knew we had and didn't know how to use. So we created a series of videos that went weekly and let, at least when they were on Facebook, to let people know we were still in business. We have plans for our expansion that are going pretty well, slowly, but going. We've applied for a grant from the Appalachian Regional Commission. And if we're given that grant, it's a planning grant, so it would take about a year to implement. And we'll know that, I guess, late summer, early fall. We consulted with two architects, haven't chosen one yet. And we're just very excited about and very hopeful that we'll have a, a place for the community to use and use for meetings. All of our fundraising activities were canceled. And even, even with that, we were able to get PPP money and several CARES grants. So we are still alive. We didn't have to eliminate staff or any of that. We're very thankful for that. We did very well on Give Local Day. We raised the most money for a small organization and received a monetary prize for that. We're very pleased with that. And the gift shop, Museum Market on Main is going. You all should all go. There's a sale until Valentine's Day. And you ought to go do a little shopping while, while you can. On a personal note, I just want to let you know that effective June 30th, I will be retiring from the museum. And I enjoyed the 12 years of, of service and especially thank you for the support you have given me and the museum in these 12 years. So I'm looking forward to something different and I'll plan to stay involved with the museum and the community. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to.
Sue, I have a comment. You know, we have so many different groups, organizations come to us every year asking for funds. And a lot of times I will ask these different groups, what are you doing to generate funds? What are you doing to keep your company going? And in most cases, the only thing these people are doing is coming to us, asking for money. And I know that you guys are constantly doing it. And even during the pandemic here, I think you had a book for it fair, is that right?
Yeah.
Right in December? And was it very successful?
We did well.
And I did stop by there and I think they had something like 5,000 books. But my point is that they're trying, you know, and they're working there. And I think you should be congratulated for that. And we should be congratulated for your 12 years too.
Thank you. We are planning Heritage Day in person this year. Plans are underway for that. So maybe we'll all see you there.
I wanted to thank you for the virtual tours. I really enjoyed those.
Thank you.
They were really nice. Even though you're saying you didn't have all the equipment, you look like you guys got it together, so.
Well, we, we do a lot of schmoozing and pretending, but we, we try.
But that was great. Been appreciate that. Are you guys going to, I heard about the Christiansburg Institute and you guys getting together about the Heritage Trail. I'm excited to hear about that.
We, we like working with them and, and we've got a good partnership.
That's really exciting. I am glad that you guys are doing that. And thank you for your 12 years of service to our community. And I hope you still stay around.
I plan to. I plan to as long as I can stand up and move, I'm going.
Thank you so much.
Touch you, there you go.
What do I do here? Everything I touch, right?
Pretty much.
Do I do this?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I'm sorry, I won't take long.
Thank you, Sue, for 12 years. I appreciate your efforts and your time.
Well, we've had, we've had an interesting time.
Yeah.
So thank you all so much for your support.
Next, we have the Coles Club of Christiansburg to request street closures for the 2021, for the 2021 Wilder's Trail Festival.
Members of council and staff, we are basically doing the same thing we've done for the last couple of years, except last year we didn't do it. The closing of Hickok Street has created some problems for us. We've got 52 rented spots there. And we had to find a place to relocate those. And we'd been working with a town events group and they're pretty well in consensus, consensus with us on what we want to do. We want to, Steve, you want to go up to, right there?
Right here's where we've done, we want to extend this. We used to have a block right here. We'd like to take it up to the crosswalk at Burger King. We actually lost 52 spots on Hickok Street because of the work that we've done this year on that. So we've expanded probably larger than we're going to need as we, and I just, in the past week, we've gotten five applications for vendors. So we're hoping to have a huge festival this year. But if we could go down to the crosswalk right there and then if we come down, we used to have a stage here in the medical parking lot. We're going to move the stage up to, here's the post office. It'll be the crosswalk between the post office and Atlantic Union Bank. And we'll pitch some of these vendors on Hickok into this parking lot. Then we'd like to take it and we put a block down to here. Usually it'll actually be a lot further, but we may use down to the entrance to the parking lot in Atlantic Union. As we go on down East Main, we anticipate we'll probably use the municipal parking lot right there to text some vendors as well. And also down Pepper Street to the back of the courthouse, possibly using that. The first areas that we will give up, if, if we don't have enough to fill on this, will be right here. Because we will be blocking this entrance coming into the Dollar General. We have not talked to Z, but we will, but that'll be the first spot that we will give up. So we don't block there. Because we don't really gain a lot of spots through here. But we're, again, anticipating a larger than usual crowd. And also, we had food vendors on College, so we've got to move those food vendors into this venue as well. We're probably putting those somewhere around the stage area here. And working with the police department, we're going to keep it open to the back here of the parking lot and out. So they will have egress and ingress right there in case they need to get out.
Luckily, we want to close part of that too.
Yeah, the dunk lane, you know, we will go down to the back of, I think what used to be the Wimmer Building right here. Or we could possibly, then put a level, we may put a few vendors down to there if needed.
So on Dollar General, if everything stays the way it is right now, if I want to go to Dollar General, I'm sure I have to go in the back door.
You'll have to come down off of First Street.
What is the door behind going into using more of North Franklin Street? Is it because of the magistrate's office?
Oh, you mean down to here?
Yes.
We will go past there because we've got businesses down here that are still open. So we've got Subway and also, and we typically don't go down North Franklin anyway.
Don't forget the liquor store.
Yeah, the liquor store. We cannot shut the liquor store down.
Well, that's definitely a good reason for that, right?
You can mess with anything in town, but don't mess with that.
And Burger King, you'll have, no trouble getting in and out of there?
No. Because the crosswalk is, or you can exit that traffic.
And I think when, when we discuss this in special events, I, I would still, I mean, I see no reason to not grant your request, but I think. mean, I see no reason to not grant your request, but I think it should be subject to a letter from Dollar General stating they understand the change in the streets and they, they will work with you on it.
I, I would ask on that, if, if you could take our word and we would talk with him, because you asked a letter, that's probably gonna have to come from corporate, and he knows how long it would take to get that.
Which Wildus Trail Festival?
Huh?
When is the Wildus Trail Festival?
September.
September 18th.
Third weekend in September.
Now, have you guys ever even thought about using College Street closer to the downtown park at all?
How would you get to it?
I mean, there is all the other streets around there.
You'd have to leave the festival to go to a second festival.
Because Hickok is closed, that's normally.
No, I know, but I was just saying, just have the festival all through College Street, so you can use the other streets.
We, we used it before, I said, we had Clevelanders over there when we had a, a connection, and also, we've had classic cars on, on the.
In the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Stephen, you guys always do a good job talking to the business centers downtown.
If we get any resistance with Dollar General, we will abandon that end.
You've always been really good about reaching out, and if they're, and if they provide feedback to you, we always get it too, so I don't see any reason for you not to change the process that's pretty successful for you guys.
I, I think you guys have done a really good job over the years, and we're grateful that you're doing that in our community. It definitely brings people together. The only big concern I have with this is that COVID is still not done, and I'm more than sure it will not be done by the fall. The only thing that I have, it will be the, we should keep COVID in mind, and just, um, the restrictions that are required right now, obviously, are probably gonna be following into the fall, so I just want to make sure that we follow the government, um, orders, you know, mask requirements and social distancing and things like that.
We closed it last year for that reason, so we, we know we're gonna follow the rules.
Mm-hmm, but thank you so much, you guys, for doing this.
Any other questions?
I, I think Mr. Shawalter suggested, these are honorable people through the years, we've got sort of an alumni association of council here, but based on, I think Mr. Shawalter had a good idea, we would trust you to interact with them and gauge your plan for that last stretch there, based on their feedback, and if they're okay with it, I think that's a good suggestion.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming to council.
I'm going to, I'm just being quiet.
No, they're not leaving. We got a vote on it, right?
Yeah. Next.
We got a vote on it.
No, that's not till we get to the discussion.
Down in the discussion.
Oh, okay.
Next, we have Reed Broden of Sanz Anderson regarding the resuming and conditional use permit process. Reed, thank you.
You bet. So, the zoning process, adjust that a little. The zoning process is basically a reflection of the, of the tension between an individual's right to do what they wanna do with their property and the state's rights to, to protect people and protect the common good. We've got zoning, we can trace zoning regulation back to 1611 in, in Jamestown, and of course, it was in place centuries before that in England. But the basic purpose is the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the community. It derives from the police powers of the state. In Virginia, the code sections 52, 15.2, 2200 through 15.2, 2329, set out the zoning laws. Our town charter, section 4.04, is the town's authorization for zoning, which allows the town to divide its area into different districts for the protection of health, safety, morals, comfort, property, and general welfare, and general governance of structures and uses and things like that. Virginia code, section 22 point, I'm sorry, 2280, allows any locality to divide its area into districts, classify the territories under its jurisdictions or any substantial portion thereof into districts, and govern the use of land, the size, height, area, bulk, location, erection, construction, et cetera, of structures, and the areas and dimensions of land. In Christiansburg, we have 14 zoning districts. There are specific regulations that apply to what can and cannot be done, what can be developed in each one of those districts. The purpose of planning subdivision and zoning is to encourage localities to improve their public health, safety, convenience, and welfare of the citizens, and to plan for future development of communities, and zoning ordinances are for the general purpose of promoting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public, and further accomplishing the objectives of 15.2, 2200. 2283 goes on to highlight the purposes of zoning. They're designed to give reasonable consideration to each of the following purposes where applicable: adequate light, air, convenience of access, safety, I'm not gonna read them all, congestion in the public streets, convenient, attractive, and harmonious communities, fire protection, historic areas, overcrowding, economic development, employment, preservation of agricultural and forestal lands, and affordable housing are just some of the purposes of zoning. And the reason it's important is because when you make zoning decisions, you need to keep these purposes in mind. That's the whole focus of your decision, is to look at these, these purposes. Moving on to zoning amendments, whenever the public necessity, convenience, general welfare, or good zoning practice requires, the governing body may by ordinance amend, supplement, or change the regulations, district boundaries, or classifications of property. So whenever, whenever a zoning change is made, there should be evidence in the record and a finding that supports one of those causes or reasons. And there's more than one kind of type of a zoning amendment, there's a broad zoning amendment, which means like changing the regulations that apply to a particular district. For example, in the R1 residential, single-family district, you might change whatever is allowed, whether you can have a garage or an accessory building, and that changes everything within the district. That's one type of amendment. Another type of amendment is basically changes to the zoning map, where you bring one parcel into a particular zoning area or regulation, or you may bring a whole bunch of related parcels, and that's what we refer to as rezoning. Rezoning can be initiated by the town council or the planning commission, but it must be stated in the, in the resolution where that's initiated, one of the purposes that we talked about earlier under 2283. Can also be initiated by landowners or their representatives, or if they're selling the property, the person who is buying the property with the consent of the landowner. Once initiated, they work with town staff to complete an application, they submit that application, it's reviewed by the planning commission, planning commission makes its report and recommendation within 90 days, and if they don't, then it's assumed to be approved. Both the planning commission and council have to meet, have a public meeting, and it can be a joint public hearing, and they must give notice, among other things, it's gotta be sufficient to alert the public to what the, the issue to be discussed is. Notice should also be posted on the property and published for two successive weeks, and can be concurrent between the two meetings. If you, in addition to being posted, it has to be mailed, if there are 25 or fewer parcels affected, you mail it to each parcel affected, each abutting parcel, and each property that's across the road that may be affected. Those notices will be sent by registered or certified mail. If it's more than 25 parcels, you only may have to mail it to the written owner, and you can use regular mail. Council may act within one year of the filing. If you fail to act within one year, the rezoning is deemed approved unless it's been withdrawn or unless an extension has been granted. Council may amend the request, but another public hearing is required if the amendment would result in a more intensive use. 2284 sets out a number of factors to be considered in rezoning, like the existing use and character, comprehensive plans, suitability for various uses, and on and on. The issue's really, does it satisfy at least one of those factors? You don't have to satisfy all nine. Maybe an issue that's addressed in the comprehensive plan, and so the question is, you know, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? But no one factor is determinative. Comprehensive plan is a critical factors, but you can look at all the other factors or one or more of the other factors and, and make a finding or approval based on that if you find that the rezoning is reasonable based on those. Suitability for the property for whatever uses, and the idea is to encourage the most appropriate use of the land. You can also look at the value under the existing and proposed zoning. You can look at existing use and character, and that's relevant to determine whether existing use and zoning is reasonable. You can look at the nearby property as well. You can look at the effect of rezoning on the value of the property, and the economic feasibility of development under the existing zoning. I think we've all heard cases where someone had the reasonable concern that development of the property required putting in roads, et cetera, et cetera, and only, the only way to make that profitable was to be to increase the density of the zoning. Trends of growth or change, we've all seen the farmland that's turned into commercial land or residential land, and also, of course, protection of existing neighborhoods. Another zoning factor is current and future requirements of the community. Again, that's an important factor, and it's more than just a belief that we need more retail or we need more residential, it needs to be based on actual official formal studies, and that, of course, is a fundamental part of comprehensive planning and may have already been addressed in comprehensive planning. You can impose conditions on rezoning. Reclassification may be allowed up subject to certain conditions. A zoning ordinance may include and provide for voluntary proffering and writing by the owner of reasonable conditions, but you can't be too loose with those conditions. And it's actually a fairly complicated issue if you start talking about what conditions are allowed and whatnot. Basically, though, the rezoning itself must give rise to the need for conditions, should have a reasonable relation to the rezoning. You normally can't do a cash contribution, though there may be exceptions for that, and you can't include mandatory dedication of real or personal property. Normally, you don't allow for payment for a construction of off-site improvements, but there can be exceptions to that. Just generally, it should be something directly related to the development and addressing the impacts of development. Moving on from rezoning to conditional use permits, that is a different topic. We said that zoning districts have their own regulations and set of regulations, and each zoning district permits certain uses as a matter of right. If it's a use, and you're in that zoning district, and it's permitted under the zoning ordinance, you can go do it. There are other uses that are permitted, and they're part of the zoning ordinance, but you gotta get approval first. So that requires a specific case-by-case consideration by council. It's not a rezoning, because it's already under the zoning, and it's not a variance, because it does not alter the zoning ordinance. It's basically uses that may have a greater impact than those that are allowed as a matter of right, and then you can address those impacts by adding conditions. Conditions may include abatement or restricting noise, setback requirements, steps to prevent or alleviate traffic congestion, access, parking, instruction of a buffer or shield. A couple of examples would be if you have a home-based business in a residential area or a church in a residential area, you might wanna have restrictions on signage, you may wanna have extra parking, you may wanna address traffic problems. A conditional use permit, if granted, can may be revoked if the conditions are not fulfilled. If the development is not commenced within 24 months, it becomes void, though it can be extended for an additional 12 months, and it can expire if the condition is discontinued. So unless the conditional use is, is approved, it is prohibited, and the council has discretion to deny it. First issue is just, is it a use that's permitted as a conditional use in the particular district that the property is in? And if it is, and the applicant accepts the conditions imposed, and any procedural requirements are met, conditional use permit is usually granted. But you can deny it if it fails to meet any requirements of the zoning ordinance, it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, or it doesn't comply with any of the factors we talked about briefly under 15.2, 2284. There's some reasons you can't deny it. There we go. You can't deny it for something unrelated to the zoning interests. So you can't decide it just based on superstition, fear, things like that. You can't deny it for discriminatory reasons. You know, if you've got a development on one side of the street and you allowed it there, probably ought to allow it on the other side of the street, unless you can come up with some rational, non-discriminatory basis that it's okay over here, not okay over there because we've got schools there or something. And whatever your decision is, should be something in the record to reflect the evidence that supports that decision. It can be appealed to the Supreme Court, not Supreme Court, Circuit Court, I guess eventually the Supreme Court. Whoever appeals it would have to be agreed by the decision, it doesn't have to be the owner, but it needs to be somebody interested in the, in the property. And the basic issue is, you know, was it complying with zoning regulations? Was the decision reasonable? The denial's presumed unreasonable, but you can produce evidence of reasonableness to rebut that. Briefly, I'll mention variances. Variance by, by definition is a reasonable deviation from the zoning regulations. It's not the same thing as a conditional use permit, because a conditional use permit is specifically set forth and allowed by the zoning regulations. This is a variance or a modification to the zoning regulation. It usually occurs in circumstances where you have a difficulty that would apply to the property, where it's just unfair not to allow someone to use their property because of a technical difficulty with the zoning ordinance. Maybe it's a property that's got a weird shape, you can't build a house on it because of the setback, and so you allow them to build the house, give them a variance just for that particular purpose. Generally, sparingly granted, you know, if there's a reasonable use for the property, you don't grant variance. It's not usually granted to expand or to build more structures. Basically, the idea is you're allowing one owner of one parcel to do what everybody else in the neighborhood can already do. It's not to allow an applicant to do what nobody else can do. Just wanna point this out, it is a fairly new statute that allows a ward of compensatory damages for unconstitutional conditions imposed on an application for an approval or permit. It's not exactly clear what unconstitutional would mean, but I think the key is that it has to, your, your conditions have to be directly related to the property and to the development that's proposed, and, you know, the impacts of that development. You know, just a few keys to staying out of trouble with zoning, you know, understand the focus, the focus, the matters, the purposes of zoning, the factors to be considered, those are the ones in 2284, focus on those matters, and, you know, keep evidence in the record that that's what you were focused on. In general, zoning decisions need to comply with procedural requirements. If they meet all the procedural requirements, it's considered a legislative act, it's presumed to be reasonable, and it's entitled to deference. If the issue is fairly developed, debatable, then the decision should be sustained by a court. I'll briefly mention Koya, and basically, if you have an interest in a transaction, or a family member has an interest in the transaction, or you're gonna realize some foreseeable, foreseeable direct or indirect benefit as a result of the action, you should disclose that interest, and you should not participate in the discussion or the voting. And that includes zoning decisions. There are a few exceptions. There are a few exceptions, and they basically are, if you're a member of a group, like you're part of the general public and it's going to affect everybody in the general public equally, then, then you don't have to worry as much about it. That's it.
You please go back one more time.
And I will say, COYA is a whole separate night, if you want to go over that.
Have you done this presentation to the planning commission?
I understand they were invited to participate today.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if anybody's here, but I understand they, they may be watching.
They often watch the, yeah, they often watch the town council meetings.
Well, I think, I'm under the assumption, Reed, that a hard copy of this will be available.
Hard copy would certainly be available, and I'd be glad to meet with the planning commission at any time.
Okay.
And we can do COYA another night.
Believe what you just did, there's a trockle of information there.
Well, it's my pleasure. I'm glad, appreciate the opportunity to present to y'all.
I don't want to keep Reed up there anymore than he should, but Reed, when we're talking about progress for conditional use permits or rezoning, and we've had quite a few this past year, you mentioned, you know, when, when we go to vote, what we should consider, and I think you mentioned right towards the end, is evidence on the record. So you're basically recommending we should also watch what we say because we can't, we cannot require progress for, for rezoning. So what I'm hearing you say is we should really watch what we say, that, you know, because I've heard up here over the past year, well, if you would do this, or if you would do that. And fortunately, all those rezonings passed. But if one failed and one of our council members or whomever it would be would be like, I really wish you would do that, and then they voted no on it, that would sort of, that's, that's pretty much evidence in the record, and that could make us liable. Am I correct for that, you know, for that developer to come back on us or take it up?
There might be a possibility, depending on the particular circumstances and what was said. I absolutely think it's important to be cautious about what's said.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have citizens' comments. If you would like to address council, you can come to the podium, name, address. Address your comments to the chair, which is me. You have a limit of three minutes, and I will signal you have a minute left. Is there anyone who would like to address council? Come on.
Let me get my mask down for this.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Catherine Schultz, born at Church Street. I am here to address an issue I was reading about in Roanoke Times. I know it's not on the schedule, but I was reading that it could possibly be brought up, and I want to go ahead and get ready to take care of this now. I'm here to oppose the buildings and areas prohibition of gun carry that I was reading about in Roanoke Times and some of the things that were said in that article. And I'm doing this because I can't run from people. I'm not only healing from an amputation, but I have significant injuries, and they keep me from escaping essentially. In a situation like Virginia Tech or Virginia Beach, instead of run, hide, and fight, I'd have the option to hide. I would be a very easy target for someone. I'm a big activist for open carry, concealed carry, and people like me would be reduced to hiding. I'm also a survivor of domestic violence and stalking, and I learned really fast that you're in charge of your own safety and you're your own first responder. Not only that, but training and carrying leaves people safer, period. Depending on location, it takes an average of 10 minutes for police to arrive, but the DOJ study says as long as an hour. And by the time they're there, usually the crime has occurred. So an attack, rape, murder, you're just there. Practicing my right to carry helps me and hundreds of thousands of years, years of others yearly protect our lives and protect those around us. The comparison in the Roanoke Times to law-abiding gun owners carrying to people having sexual acts in the street.
You have about 40 seconds.
Practicing a civil right versus an illegal and voyeuristic act, I'm hurrying. Instead of more legislation, we need to educate people on the safety and training. Please don't enact ordinances that would take away our right to carry our firearms to protect our lives in public buildings and land. Every year, so many women are attacked, raped, or murdered while walking, jogging, or hiking on public land. We deserve the right to protect ourselves. I deserve the right to protect myself. I can't run from a situation like that. I wanted to go ahead and address that, and I thank you for giving me the time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have a sanitizer stuff.
Sorry?
That doesn't count on your three minutes.
I'm standing, I'm standing like a flamingo, too, I know. Hopefully, I won't have to wear just a sock much longer. Okay, so just wait. Let me get your weight down here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We should have a trash can up there.
Do what?
I said, we should have put a trash can under there out there.
Oh, I'll live, I'll find one somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address council?
If I can take this off, please. My name's Terry DeHoney, and I live at 70 Patricia Lane in Christiansburg. I'm an Army veteran, Vietnam veteran, a hunter, and a concealed carry licensed carrier. I don't want to take wind out of anyone's sails or anything. I think there, there are certain circumstances where it is good that you can carry a gun. I firmly believe that. There are also places that I don't believe they should be carried, and one of them is If we say that it's, you have to have a gun in order to be safe in a meeting like this, that doesn't say much for that officer over there. It's not much of a vote of confidence for our police department. I know that the law passed, and I was one of the, of those who wanted to get a permit, because I feel like there are two types of people who get a concealed carry permit. And those are, well, I should say three because, but in a, in other situations, the two kinds of people, in my opinion, are those who never want to shoot anyone in their whole life, but they will do it to protect themselves or others. And then there's a second type, again, in my opinion, and those are the people that are just waiting, just waiting, so that they can shoot somebody legally.
Give me a minute.
And there are a lot of those people out there, too. Those are the ticking time bombs. And I don't think you want them in a meeting like this. You don't want the responsibility. You don't want the outcome if there was something to happen. My wife was a, a probation officer in Ohio where we, we moved from. And she used to have the FBI call to, to ask about certain people, if they should be allowed to have, or to purchase a handgun.
Ten seconds.
Too many times, she said, had to say, yes, they can. And these are people with questionable records, but it was only because they could buy that because they had gotten charges reduced from an assault to something lesser so that they could get a gun.
Thank you.
They had reduced charges on domestic violence the same way, so that they could hunt and carry a gun.
Thank you.
There are places they should not be.
Very good. Would you sanitize your stand there?
As you can tell, I'm not used to voting.
Nice, nice presentation.
Three minutes goes by quickly, doesn't it?
Yes, it does.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else to address council?
Hello, council. Mayor Barber, John Wilbur, 320 Briarwood Drive. I've been Christiansburg 22, 23 years now. Professional firearms instructor for the last 11 years. And I want to say, I, too, am appalled by the remarks in the Roanoke Times by Councilman Barber. I don't think it is councils, I don't think the council has the authority to give away the rights of multiple generations of Christiansburg residents perpetually. It's a solution in search of a problem that we don't have. I just, I don't think that this is the, the right move for us to take. I think that trying to mirror what Blacksburg is doing, a council that is mostly made up of people from other places, is nothing that we need to emulate. And if it comes before council, we'll talk farther. When I'll oppose it, I'll oppose it heavily. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Did you sanitize your spot there, brother man? Sorry, this is new for us, too.
I didn't touch anything when I was up here, but I still was thinking about that head of time.
It sounds like it's not important, so we're going to be very real.
You're going to have to get stormwater on all the alcohol on this table.
I know, I know. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? Here's another one, I will close the public comments. We'll go on to committee reports. Ms. Sacks?
Sure.
Central business?
Absolutely. We had a, an Arts Board meeting today, and the paperwork process to get it all started is going very well. We should expect to have our final drafts ready by our next meeting, March 9. And wastewater, it was a brief, short meeting today, and I'll let Sam talk about central business. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we did have a central business meeting last Wednesday, and basically, we didn't bring up anything new, just tried to bring up what's on the table so we can get rid of some items. I was able to learn that Marty is part of a group of farmers market managers, so he's not working on the farmers market all by himself. So he has some good information, and they are planning on using Direct Center this summer for the new location, see how that's going to turn out. But basically, right now, you know, I think we touched on this just to make sure where we stand right now far as getting caught up and standing ahead.
Thank you. Politics, representation?
Yes, I have a comment there. Everyone knows how the pandemic has affected hotels and restaurants and how business has gone down. And you can go to Virginia Tech Sports and see almost no one there because of the situation. But I just wanted to bring out something that during February and March, there's going to be about 20 swim meets in the Aquatic Center. And many of the people coming to those meets are from out of town. And so, you know, we always talk about every year what an economic value the pool is, but I think this year even more so, with Virginia Tech not being able to do that, that these people from the swim meets will be helping our restaurants and our motels. And I just wanted to throw that out.
Can I make a comment about the Aquatic Center really quick? I would really like to see on the newsletter to continue to have the information about the swim meets the most that we can, so we can provide that information for the citizens. And just a quick reminder, I found this out just recently myself, but there is reservations available for people to use the pool. And those are on Fridays at 8:00 a.m. online, or you can even call, but definitely go online at 8:00 o'clock and make those reservations for the week. I think I have found it to be a really, really good thing to do with my family, and I think it's a, it's a great facility, and everybody should take advantage of it.
Or at least show up for their pre-arranged swim time.
I absolutely agree.
I think that's what they've been having a problem with, is a lot of people will take the slot, not show up, and there are still other people that are out there. So I'm sure our aquatic staff's working on that.
Well, and I think with, you know, if I can make a comment, I think it's so easy to make a reservation, but I don't think it's as easy to make a cancellation. So I think that maybe that would be something that we can look into, maybe fixing in the future.
I believe the staff is a little bit ahead of you on this, and I think for the last month or so, when people are not showing up, they have been calling up and saying, you reserved this lane and you did not come, and we would like you to see that not happen. And if you do feel like you're going to not be able to attend sometime, you should need to give us a call. And I think that's, that's really paying off. I was swimming there today, and all four lanes were, were full. And I did swim yesterday, and all four lanes were full. At that time, I did it. So they are working on that.
Kudos to staff, that's good proactive action.
You have a brief report from our airport at, or the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport, which we're one of the owner in. We had a meeting earlier today, and I want to let the council know and the people that are watching that the airport is doing very well. Keith Holt is taking the reins there, is doing a great job. Just some simple facts, as you know, the runway extension is now open, and the evidence of that investment is paying off now. The, the two main sources of revenue for the airport are avgas, which is gas for non-jet planes, and jet a fuel sales. And the fuel sales for this month in January for avgas, it's more than last year, and is, if you look at the last four years, it's almost double right now than it was for the average of the last, the last four years. And for jet fuel, which is even better, for jet fuel sales, they sold 8,000 gallons this month. If you take the last four years average, that's an 86% increase over the average for the last four years. And I asked Mr. Holt what the reasons for this were, and he gave me three reasons right off the bat. The additional length of the runway means that our, the planes that are using our airport can add more fuel, apparently, you know, that's an important consideration. So their planes are using more fuel now that they have a longer runway. Our business climate here is strong. There's users that have not been using our airport that are now. And we're absolutely, we've actually captured a lot of charter service now that we didn't have before. People that have been coming into Roanoke are now coming here, including the Virginia Tech football, our basketball team is now flying in and out of there. But all these are very positive signs, and keep in mind, this is during COVID, and the last, the, the fuel sales are more than they were last year, and we're in COVID right now. So just to give council an update, several businesses were listed that are using the airport now. The biggest one probably is BAE Systems. So that's very positive for our region, and these are employers that are in Christiansburg and are employing people that are citizens. So that's an update from the airport.
Thank you. Mr. Scholl?
Well, actually, I was part of the, the Water and Waste Committee, but we'll be talking about the Stormwater Utility Committee that'll study our current rates and procedures, I'm sure, or at least touch on some of the procedures. And Randy will bring up, probably in the next two meetings, we're going to have a conservation easement, though Randy will talk about that generally, and then it'll be in our packets, either the next meeting or the meeting after that.
Mr. Bishop, any other committee?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Any discussion in action by mayor and council? Any discussion and action by mayor and council? One is the reappointment of Heather Browning to the Public Arts Advisory Board for a term, for a two-year term, expiring December 31, 2022. I think Ms. Browning is, was originally appointed with a one-year term, and we're going to want the recommendation to extend it to two years.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Heather Browning to the Public Arts Advisory Board for a two-year term.
Motion in the second. Any comments?
I just want to say that Heather has been a wonderful part of the advisory board. She's a great asset, and I welcome to have her back for two more years.
No other discussions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. Quanis Club of Christiansburg requests for September the 18th, 2021, street closures for Wilderness Trail Festival.
I make a motion that we approve the Quanis Club of Christiansburg request for September 18th, 2021, street closures for Wilderness Trail Festival.
I would second that.
Motion in the second. Any discussion, comments?
I think the comments were what I really made during the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. Contract with McDonough, Brill, and Peck Incorporated doing business as MVP for construction, engineering, and inspection services for the Christiansburg Suiter Park project in the amount of $677,376.
Make a motion, we approve the contract with MVP for the CEI services for our new park.
I'll second it. Motion in the second. Comments, questions?
I will continue to vote no on this item since it shows consistency. I didn't authorize to be done during the pandemic, so people need to understand what the bills are, and this is a lot of money, and it's a continuation of what is yet to come about the expenses about the park. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I think, if I'm not mistaken, we normally, or we have in the past hired outside firms to do a lot of the stuff that would take away from town staff that we don't have staff for. Is that correct?
That is correct, and this would basically be a third-party consultant for us with the park, and be maintaining the current consultant that we have onboard. Kevin Wills has served that role, and they would help us with basically inspections and guidance through the development of the park.
I make one footnote to this. I'm in, you know, I'm in the construction business, but I have absolutely no relation to the project, of course, and before this agenda came out, I didn't know what, you know, what we were, what this number was. But I will tell you, for $677,000 is a very low percentage. Typically, what a construction engineering inspection is called CEI in our lingo, but that's a very reasonable price for the size of the project. And I'm not making the flood, I'm just saying, as a use of town money for that size of project, that's reasonable, and I applaud Mr. Nelson and whoever else was involved with negotiating that.
Anything else? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
That is 5-1. Establishment of the Stormwater Utilities Study Committee. Randy, have you got that one?
Yes. I'm going to ask Andrew to bring up a list of names that we have. Had a meeting earlier, we had had, I guess, suggestions from the Stormwater Committee of the composition for the committee, and we'd come up with suggestions of a community advocate, conservation representative, development representative, representatives from large commercial, small businesses, and also a residential HOA representative. And the engineering staff has basically come up with names and reached out for contact with these individuals. The residential, I guess, community advocate would be Dr. Sam Bauer. He is the one person who was on the committee last time, that's commented the prior committee. Dan Mederick would represent conservation. He's with Trout Unlimited. Of course, he's a town resident also. The development, Jim Wessel would be representative from Shinkase Home Builders. From large commercial, we'd have Joseph Kuhn from Uptown Christiansburg, formerly of the mall, in RV Mall. Todd Halt from Moog, and Pastor Scott Openchain from Blue Ridge Church. From the small business side, we'd have Steve Simonas from Ballzern Associates, Jason Poff from MDI Safety, Bob Poff from Valleywide Management. And from residential HOA, we'd have Paul Sitzemeyer from The Villas of Pepper's Ferry, with Kathleen Dowdy serving as his alternate. And like I say, engineering staff has reached out to all of these individuals. They are all willing to serve, and that was the recommendation of the Waste and Water Committee. We will, we have had other names suggested to us, which we would certainly send invites to the public for that. We would have public participation meetings, which, of course, anybody's welcome to attend. But based on the criteria that was laid out and the recommendation of the committee, these are the names that recommendation before you.
I think it's a strong slate, and I will make a motion that we establish the Stormwater Utilities Study Committee as presented.
I'll second.
Motion in the second. Comments? Madam Clark, oh, I'm sorry.
So is this is it? You're not going to have any, what you're saying is that you're going to have more citizens? Is that what you're saying?
We would have citizen input meetings, but this would actually be the study committee.
How long do you think the study is going to take?
It's going to take a few months.
Just only two months?
A few months at the very least. We'd hope to have it done basically in the time for, at least for budget purposes this year.
And they're advisory, too. They'll, we take final action on that, and of course, we'll let public comment as well. But they're simply advisory. They're not setting any policy.
Right. And they're not inventing utility fee. That was already done with, Mr. Van Hoosier was our, who was here earlier with Quanis, was actually our council member on that committee, which went on for how long? Did that go on, the initial one?
I think we studied probably for about a year and a half or so.
Yeah. So they're not, they're not starting from scratch on this.
Any other comments, questions? Madam Clark?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. This is a reaffirm, the next reaffirmation of the Town Council Code of Ethics. There are no changes proposed at this point?
I'll make a motion, we adopt, we adopt the Christiansburg Town Council Code of Ethics as presented.
I will second that.
Motion in the second. Discussions?
Yes. It has been unfairly applied. We're getting dispositions because we were elected by the people in this town and not because of six people. Just because sometimes we don't like someone that does not allow us to tell them, someone comes and tells that one person to go right ahead and resign. We're trying to make their lives living healthy. That's what elections are for. I see, when I see this Code of Ethics, the only person that I see right here that I can applaud for following each of those steps and has treated me with respect, and everything I hear is the one person is Mr. Bishop. And I appreciate everything that he has done and how he has engaged with me and welcomed me to this thing. When I see each of these items, like number one, council members should work for the common good of all people in Christiansburg and add to the private or personal interest. We will treat all people in claims and transactions in a fair and equitable manner. I don't see that when we treat some people that come to town council to speak in one way, in another ones in another way, just because we may not like their ideas. And the second one that stays right here, council members should at all times refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges, or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of town council, boards, commissions, committees, etc., for public. This one, even our private businesses have become the towns' businesses. When someone tells me, "Who writes your emails?", I feel that as not working together. I find that very offensive, as a matter of fact. Council members' duties should be performed in accordance...
Wait a second, wait a second. Number two, what do you mean by that?
Well, when someone says to me, and another council member says to me, "Who writes your emails?", don't you find that kind of disturbing?
It's a good question.
It's a good question. And that goes along with the, with the one question about when I asked for funds to McKee for $2,000, they needed help during the pandemic, and another council person, and you say that I should come out with my own money.
Say that again, please.
When McKee, when I had spoken with McKee, and I had been talking to Randy, trying to figure out if we could help McKee, and then McKee asked for $2,000, and I came to town council and I asked, "Is there any way that we can do about this?", and you told me that I should pay out of my own pocket, along with another council member. That's not working together. There is, I can go on...
Let's talk about McKee, okay? Each year, as, let's talk about our process for grants. Each year prior to our budget process, there's a grant application, which any organization can fill out. Now, we do have certain conditions and caveats to that. Well, that's why we come up with a budget. Now, if we want to amend the budget, which Ms. Hicks brought to us, McKee never came to us and asked for additional money after we voted for the budget. That's something Ms. Hicks brought to us. And the impression is that we worked pretty hard to get this budget done. That grant application is out there for McKee or any nonprofit organization to complete, and we have a sluo. Unfortunately, we can't, a lot of times, especially this year, grant all their funds. But to say that we suggested, you know, nobody's making you pay McKee, okay? McKee could have easily come to us and ask if they could have a late addition to us, but they never did, I don't think.
I requested, and I asked if they needed help, and they sent an email requesting $2,000.
But you understand, this is a council decision, not a Joanna Hicks decision.
And I understand that, and that's why I wanted to bring it out to you guys. And I did, and I did it in a respectful way.
Did we fund that?
What? No, you didn't. As a matter of fact, we were so glad that HRSA came out with 60 grand that we could use for them, and we did. And praise Jesus for that. $60,000 was given to them, to McKee, after that.
So tell me again how us not funding McKee, based on your recommendation after the budget...
The thing is, it is not about McKee, and it's not about an organization that asks only for $3,000. You're cutting me off.
We are both done.
Talk about Code of Ethics.
To accept the Code of Ethics?
I haven't finished, and you're cutting me off.
Actually, we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second. We're in discussion. Now, Ms. Hicks, let me caution you. We're not going to go down every one of these items and have a 20-minute discussion about it.
I'll make a simple statement. I made this statement in private a few weeks ago, but I'll make it again now publicly. I've been on this council for 15 years now, and this last year has been a train wreck. I'll just leave it at that. And what I'll say is, I have fallen short of the Code of Ethics, and I've fallen short in other areas of my life, as a boss, as a husband, as a dad. But this is something we should aspire to, and I want to be the first to say I've fallen short in these areas, in some of these areas. But I do aspire to this, and I think we should adopt it. We adopted it last year, and I will commit to do my best to honor this. But I do want to say that this last year has been different than the other 14 years on council, and we need to do better. And this Code of Ethics is at least something for us to aspire to. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Well, I feel like this is a joke. If you wanted to make us a new year resolution, you should do that, because the reality is, this brings so much, every meeting that you have that Code of Ethics in there, it seems like it's unfairly treated. I get treated one way when other council members get treated another way, and that's disrespectful to the Code of Ethics itself.
I make a motion that we call the vote.
Thank you.
I'm not being assertive. You don't get to say that right now. Mr. Barber has the respect to do that.
Let me tell you both, I control this meeting, and we are going to vote now. Madam Clark, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stikes?
That is 5-1, and it is carried by the majority of the council, so even if you did not vote for it, you are still bound by the Code of Ethics. Discussion and resolution of establishment of policy for public comment. I'm sorry, Ms. Hicks, I'm...
Yes, sir. I hope that you guys follow the Code of Ethics this year.
And it's back at you.
Are you saying we don't follow the Code of Ethics?
No, I don't see that as following the Code of Ethics. No, sir. You're cutting me off. You do all kinds of stuff. You normally attack me, and here where that they get me, where we're done. I'm done with you, sir.
Do you follow them? Yes or no?
I do try to do the best I can. This is, like, every time I come over here, it's like you're, you hate me for some reason.
I don't hate you.
Yeah, you act like it.
We're done. We are done.
What was the last comment? I'd like that for record.
I would, I would as well.
Childcare. Starting with you.
You're saying we're like childcare? You're taking care of us, or what? I don't understand.
Well, this is definitely a plain of kids right here. You know, I am not talking to you anymore. I'm done.
Very good. Thank you.
I'm sure that's in the minutes.
Yes.
We've got a good rapport together.
Mr. Barber said we were done, and we're done.
I would also. Thank you. Now, Henley, would you please poll council?
We still have ads to do.
Huh?
We're doing the ads.
You already voted on it.
No, we have not. We have a motion to vote.
No, we're really...
It's 5-1. So what happens when you get confused and start driving, and complain on, and everybody loses track of that? Discussion of resolution of establishing a policy for public comments. Mr. Broton and Sands Anderson, I sent a, we had an email from a concerned citizen a couple of weeks ago, and I believe that I forwarded that to everyone, to the council members. And I asked him to come up with, because I don't think we really have a set resolution, and we're not going to have a set resolution tonight. We're going to discuss this, and we'll vote on it in ten weeks. Mr. Broton, would you like to tell us what goes into this? I don't think, in looking at it, if you read it, I do not think that it violates anybody's right of procedure, which is questioned. And I will state, we're not, we're not, we're not required to have a citizens' comment section at all.
But it's a great idea, too.
It is a great idea. But if things progress, we can see this, I can see bringing this up that possibly we may not want to, because we get, there's the only person up here on this council, on this House, that has not been publicly attacked is Mr. Bishop.
So far.
So far. And I will say, I think the most scathing one we had was, was talking about Ms. Hicks. It was just totally scathing. So I would like for you to look at this thing, read. Would you tell me your thought process behind this?
Sure. Obviously, the First Amendment's a concern. I think we're fine with any kind of regulation that doesn't address content. When you start to address content and what people say, not how they say it, then you begin to have an issue with the First Amendment.
begin to have an issue with the First Amendment. There are what they call an open public forum, a traditional public forum, where you can say just about anything without restriction, and you're entitled to do that, protected by the First Amendment. When you provide a limited public forum to address a limited issue, then you have a, you can restrict the free speech more. Public hearing is an example of that. We have a public hearing to speak to one issue, and if somebody gets off that issue, you can tell them to stop, you can tell them to leave. So if your public comment period is a open mic, and anybody can stand up and address whatever they want to address, then they get to say pretty much anything they want to address, as long as they're not disorderly or obscene. So I have tried in writing this to make sure that what we're talking about is a limited public forum, in which you would be entitled to impose some restrictions. That is the basis of this. I think that one through five, you are clearly, how you speak, manner, time, place, and manner, restrictions, and they are certainly fine. Six and seven, you start to talk about what people are saying, and that could be a concern.
Can we talk now?
Please.
All right. I am really concerned with this, just because, well, first of all, I don't want to make it to be a privilege for people to talk over here, because that's, I mean, I feel that they deserve that, if they're town Christiansburg, if they pay taxpayers paying money over here to the town of Christiansburg, they deserve the right to speak. I feel like some of the things that were brought up over here were actually brought up, because we keep hammering this code of ethics and things like that on the agenda, which it brings an open window for people to discuss our businesses, personal lives, which have nothing to do with town council, and I recommend for people to keep it that way. You know, I'd rather see people to come over here and engage with us about our town council job, not as our private lives, and not as the lives that we have with our businesses or employees, because, I mean, this is not just about me. I feel like some of us are retired, and this goes for everybody. I, and to tell you through, I got some very nasty comments from someone about one of the town council members here and about their job, and actually, I have gotten two from two different members in the community, talking about two town council members here in the town that were not me. And that, to me, it was kind of really bad to hear, because I don't want this job to affect our jobs and our personal lives. This is completely separate. I think this is a sacred job that we're doing for the community, and I think people have to understand that we don't make a lot of money in this job. The pain and suffering that we may be dealing over here, as much as we hate for people to come and say some bad words, this is not the right place. And I think when, I mean, I'm kind of on the edge on this, because I'm really concerned, just like, you know, some of us have real lives and real jobs still, we are all not retired still. This can really play into our jobs and our companies that we work for, and I think it opens up another window for lawsuits and things like that, harassment, you know? In our case, my family has felt harassed, and I don't think that this job has nothing to do with what my husband and the business, or his people that he runs to, have anything to do with this. I feel like it's a civil matter, or whatever it is, and if that's the case, it needs to be taking place in a court case, or something like that, or even directed with that person itself not be made a town business, because it has nothing to do with town council. This is not just for my protection, but for someone of you guys' jobs as well. I think that as much as I feel uncomfortable when people come over here, and some of them have made some comments, even people that don't even live here, that have been civilly penalized or taken to court because of different things, even with our business, and for them to come over here, it opens a very big window for even for a person like me, that I know what's going behind this, you know, and I know what's the real situation, and even for me to open up and say, well, you know, we took you to court for this, and now I'm making it a town business. And that is a hard thing to deal with, because as a person that, I don't want to bring this to town council, and I definitely don't want the town to be, have a lawsuit because of something like that. I'm also concerned of somebody saying a profanity word, because a lot of us, when you learn a second language, the first thing that you learn is fowers. And it's very easy to say, you know, at court, than what it is to mean to say, I love you. And from a person that knows many more languages, I can tell you, those words are so easy to say. I have a specialist child, and the first words that he likes to say is fowers. And I don't train him to say those words, but somehow I know that they're sticky, you know, and they're easy to say, and they sometimes help within their management, you know? And so I think my concern is that we're going to tell somebody to be quiet, because they said a bad word. What are the, what are we going to do to that person? Are we going to kick them out? What are the restrictions that we're going to put on this?
Chief Sisson will.
Well, but that's scary to me, because that can bring us lawsuits, civil lawsuits. And I'm scared with that. I mean, I sent him an email the other day, telling him about a case somewhere in the state. I think it was a federal thing. He went to the federal court, and the person won, even though he said an f word about someone in politics. And, I mean, is this scary? We're opening up a window to get a lawsuit that we don't need to be in.
May I ask you a question? Are you saying-
I just want to know, do you support this or not?
I don't think I support it, because I want free speech.
Can we, anybody else? Well, this is-
Well, this is giving free speech.
I think we have a motion.
No.
No, no, we're just having a discussion.
Mike's looking for any corrections, or council to adopt as is, or-
May I bring up one? I don't know, Ms. Anne Hess, who's a former elected official with the county and so forth, a name we all recognize, that brought up a good point about the comments during, the comments during our live meetings, you know, the comments-
Live stream.
Yes, live stream.
Is that our way we can cancel them?
We can disconnect those comments.
Okay, and would that fall under this, or is that a separate issue, Reed?
That's separate.
I think if you get rid of them, well, it would be separate from this policy.
Okay, well, then, I would like us to consider that maybe the next meeting, because we did them in the agenda, but if that's a separate discussion, then I'll make a motion that we adopt this, well, I guess if there's other suggestions to add, I'll, we'll see if anyone else wants to add something or subtract something.
I guess my, I guess my question to-
Joanna, can we hear from a couple other council people, and then you can respond to that? I would like to see, get everybody's input in here.
Ms. Shaw?
I will have it.
Thank you.
Ms. Sachs?
Yes. The part on number seven, I completely understand keeping it regulated to town business, but I do have a concern, they're taxpayers, and they should be able to tell us whatever they want to tell us, and if they do get vulgar, you know, we've got the gavel to say, please.
Well, I would certainly not just automatically kick someone out. I think there is a warning process, you know, strike one, strike two, and call Mark Sisson.
Seven does seem to be a little problematic.
It does, I thought so.
The mayor has control of it anyway, so I think that's-
Well, I mean, it's, it's, normally under citizens' comments, they can talk about issues, items within town, could it be a street beating paved, or something along those lines, but, you know, under a limited forum, they really can't come out and say, X, Y, Z's got a terrible business, and I don't like what he or she does. That has nothing to do with their performance as an elected official, and that's what we're trying to limit this to. If someone can say, well, council member whatever should not have voted on such and such item, and I think it was a dumb move, that's an opinion based on their, the performance of their town council job.
Right, and I don't want to debate that, Mike, but that's their right as citizens to come up, and whether I like it, if they're pointing me out, or Joanna likes it, whether they're pointing her out for a vote, or any one of us, it's their right in a public comment to their elected officials to say, I disagree with what you said. Now, how they put it, I don't know. You would hope they would put it some, something like I just said, but I think limiting public forum, and this is me, and I, you know, we've all been here this past year, okay? And it's just, you can't limit, it limits free speech, whether, and then you could, you could dive deeper into this, if we pass this, saying, well, that's not on the agenda tonight, so we're not going to talk about that. I mean, we could go further and further and further with this, and I do see some of the things on here that I like. One of the things I do like is that, whereas Christiansburg Town Council has adopted a code of ethics that applies to their actions, because we can only control what we do up here, and that they wish to promote the same respect and decorum at their public meetings during public comment period. So I am a big, I think this would be a great resolution, but there's some, under the policy for public comment, I like the three minutes, as long as we stay consistent with it. I like, it should be going to the presiding officer, which is you, instead of engaging. Public comments are there for us to turn on our listening ears and listen, not to necessarily engage with somebody saying something we don't like, maybe we can learn something. But when we get down into limiting what they can say, I understand profanity, I don't want to see anybody curse up here, but again, that's what your gavel's for, and we can cut them off shorter if it's inappropriate language that they're using. So I can see why we've come up with this, but there's a couple of things on here I wouldn't want to see on here. Now, something separate, and Brad, and I'm going, and Joanna, you're going to have your chance to talk on this, I'm glad you talked about our video of the comments that are on there, and that is separate than this. And I would personally like to see that just shut off. If somebody wants to share that on their social media page, they can do it, and they can have all their friends comment it on their pages. That's fine. But I think, I think Ms. Hess, and I think, I've heard it from other citizens, some of the comments on there, and these are also false identities that are, that are commenting very negatives out there, so there's no way to actually show if they're actual citizens of Christiansburg or not, or taxpayers, et cetera. But one of the things I've noticed over the years, I'm talking about something separate than this, and I would like Reed to look into this for us, is we've had people show up in skull masks, where we can't see their face, here in town council, okay? And I don't know if it's Chris, but I've seen Chris Waltz, he shows up in a, in his hood, and, but tonight especially, we can't see his face.
I don't think it was Chris.
No, it was not Chris.
I don't know who it was.
I think when you come to council, can we, you can't have a hood open this big, where we can't see who you are, or wear a mask, like a Halloween mask. Can we limit that to where you can't have anything obstructing your face, unless it's a medical mask or something of that nature, Reed? I would like to find out that.
Okay. I think that's probably going to fall loosely under the First Amendment right of freedom of speech, which is, you can't limit their dress, the way they dress, and you can't make certain requirements on them. Reed, if you double, if you double check me on that thing, but I believe I had heard that from a friend of mine, who's a mayor up in a small town up in Northern Virginia, and he said, you know, they have them coming in, even council members dressing inappropriately, gym shirts and T-shirts, and he can't stop because it's right of freedom of speech.
Honestly, I'm going to find out that.
There are any number of cases about people wearing something on their shirt or their jacket.
Right, I don't want that.
But, yeah, I mean, this may be another concern, it's at least worth checking on.
And as I said, I thought that was Chris, because he's worn a hood before, where you could barely see.
And that, and that Chris has lost 60 pounds.
Right. But if something does happen, and we don't have somebody like Chief Sisson, or John Wilburn in here, or somebody else that is obviously probably has a concealed weapons permit, how are the police going to identify somebody we cannot see who they are? We see this every day on Facebook.
Maybe we can understand.
I think we had loads, they're like, you know, the comments were, we can't tell who this is, when they reach out to public, because the mask, which we're all mandated to wear, we can't tell who they are. So somebody that you can't see any identifying characteristics.
Mark, do you have any comments about this?
There's a reason why somebody like that shows up in here that doesn't want their face, in my opinion. So I would like that looked into.
Okay.
I'll be glad to. Thank you.
You know, I would like to say, going sort of back to freedom of speech, like the gentleman just mentioned my name tonight, and I don't mind that at all. I really would be a little upset if somebody didn't come up here with a contrasting point of view than mine, and that was what makes the democratic process what it is. And just because people don't see it the way I do, I, you know, I have no grievance against that, and I think that's part of meetings here at the council, that give citizens a chance to express their opinion.
So do I kind of see that we agree with it, except taking off seven?
I like what you said, Marissa, because, like I said to you, this is not just for us town council members right now, but the future ones. I mean, nobody likes their businesses or their, or their size of their lives to be affected, because you're doing a community, I consider this community service job to the community, and I think this, this doesn't reflect who we are as people.
And I think number seven is addressing exactly what your concerns are, is that, you know, they're not going to be able to come up here if this passes and say, you know, it's limited to your performance as a public official, and the performance of the town and the town employees. It's not a, you know, let's pick on Mike Barber because his wife's a Kansas City fan. You know, it's like, it's my, it's how we perform around this table, is what I think that number seven was put in for. Reed, is that pretty close to what you wrote?
I think that was the idea.
And you think that is, even the limited public forum, as this would be, is a defendable stance to have for the town?
I think if it were, if the town were to get sued on that, I would argue that this is a limited public forum, and that we can make restrictions on speech in a limited public forum. I can't guarantee whether we'd win or lose that argument. I know the town of, or city of Charlottesville had a restriction, they basically had an open mic with no restrictions, and tried to limit someone who came in, and it was religious hate speech, basically, and they found that to be a First Amendment violation. So that's the, that's the concern.
Under the opening, no, under the open mic, but not as much under the limited public forum.
Right.
Is there any way that we can put that one item only by itself, or does anybody else feel like any other items under that should be, should be used? Because I feel like, you know, we're playing with freedom of speech, some sort of, you know, trying to be-
The first seven, the first five things are just very typical.
Should be doing that.
Number six is a setting a standard of decorum at a meeting, and it's not like they're going to be, in my opinion, as long as I'm running the meetings, they're not going to be run out of the meeting because they said some type of a foul word that's pretty graphic and vulgar in nature.
Is there no-
But it sets, it does set the decorum, it sets the pace. This is what we expect when you come here, when you're going to speak, we expect you to conduct yourself as a, as a citizen, as a- to conduct yourself as a, as a citizen, as a lady or a gentleman. Say, you know, it's kind of like the golden rule. And then the seventh one, I think limits, is intended to limit the personal attacks on our businesses or our personal lives.
During a council comment section. During the comment section on council, they can do whatever they want when they're at home, correct?
When they're done, that's right. They got all kinds of Facebook, believe it.
Can we just, is that a way to have just item number seven? Not under a number, but is that a way to put it? You know how we have the agenda, at the beginning of the agenda, to have it with all these restrictions about caving, how you can participate in everything else? Is that a way that we can put that as part of the...
I think we would have to pass it first in order to then...
No, but I, we are discussing this today, that doesn't mean we're passing it.
I assume that statement of expectations can be in the opening part of the, since we're all on this descriptive of how you can write in the comment. I'd like to see if, if that's what council wants to do, that's what we'll do. That's why I'd ask, we, I really hope that we will not let on this until two weeks till we have a chance to, to research it.
And maybe hear from, from some people who actually came up.
Obviously, this was, I felt like we weren't coming in today. I mean, even though it shows us a voting, I really didn't expect to make a vote on this, just because there is so much, you know?
But there's a lot, but it's a change, it's a change in what we have been doing.
And we're, I feel like...
Not a major change.
Well, it is a major change, because I feel like even within this year, it's been really difficult, it's difficult for anybody that doesn't come to town council to know what's going on. And, you know, like, we, we have perfect example with the park, it was under an amendment, and people wanted to speak, and they feel like, you know, doing public comments was their time. And I think that just, just clarifies things.
I'm just going to clarify with you on that statement about they want to speak. When we had that budget amendment about the park, I clearly stated, "If you are here about the park or the budget amendment, the public hearing is your time to speak."
I think it's really hard, and I wanted to mention something to you. That room over there is delayed. Like, the information that's provided right here, it takes several minutes for it to be showing up on the other TV on the other room. And that's a comment I have heard from several people. So, by the time you say that the comments are done, people are really done out of time. So, I think that's why I was concerned about asking Andrew if there were any people on the other room, because I think that's something that we definitely have to look into, just like you were talking about, Mr. Stikes, about the email that we have received. I definitely think that that's something that we need to make sure that we address. Make sure that if there is somebody over there and wants to speak, that they get the right time to speak.
So, yeah, I, number three, I don't, I think people, if they miss the public address, Mike, and I understand you make it clear for them to do it, I have no problem with them coming up there and saying comments, and even if it's talking about a public hearing two weeks from now, I don't mind that, that's...
Well, before we, what happens then, and another council member has alluded to me, then we're just turning that back into another public, public hearing, and that's not what citizens' comments are for. You know, you know, if they're limiting people, if they're adding new information...
I don't, I don't want to debate over this, but I'm just telling you, I don't have any problem with, and I'm not saying what you did was wrong. You gave everybody an opportunity, and then we've learned from it, and now we're putting, we're coming up with a policy, right? So, in my personal opinion, I don't, I would like to see number three, but we're not voting on tonight, but I do agree with Joanna that...
Then, one of the other options...
Public hearing, yeah, go ahead.
One of the other options we can do is we can require them to sign up to speak.
I think you should.
Before the meeting?
Well, I've seen other, other councils that do.
A lot of places do, the county does.
I actually, I would support a motion, I think, but what happens if somebody's late, for example? And they, you know, normally public comments are all over the place sometimes in this agenda. Sometimes they're on the beginning, sometimes they're towards the middle, sometimes the meeting extends for so long. And I mean, you, you have to think about too, that not everybody has the same lives that we have. I mean, I even have four kids, and I remember coming to this town council meetings before, not knowing what time I was going to be here, for how long I was going to be here. For, we don't even know what time the meetings are going to finish most times.
So, yeah, so what we're going to do, what we can do is in the comment section, have them sign up, and at the end of that comments, when people have had to talk, that have signed up, I can ask if there's anyone else who would like to address council.
That sounds really, really, really nice.
But I would like to have, you know, I'm not going to, I'd rather not have it where we have two people sign up to speak and then 12 sitting in the background. I mean, I think if they're going, they need, they need to sign the document.
But then, what happens if somebody sees something on their agenda later on that they actually want to have their opinion on? Would you allow them to speak about that?
Not allow citizens' comments.
No, I understand, under citizen comments, but if they come in late, you will still allow them to participate, correct?
If I ask, and they say, I will say, "Is there anyone else to address council?" As I do any night up here.
So, you're not taking that away, just clarifying that?
Well, you can, it's a trial, trial and failure, my man.
It is, it's a trial and error. But I do think, and I think in the past, we have had a sign up list. Now, it may have been during a time for, when we had some public hearings, I don't know if it was ever during the citizens' comment section, but it would not be bad to have that, to have that list.
Well, tend to be consistent with it.
I think so.
Three-minute time limit might not be a bad idea for council, too.
I noticed something, too, under the public comments. Sometimes when people come over here and speak, some of the comments are actually, the people, nah, I'm not saying that they shouldn't come over here, but if you don't live here and stuff like that, it's also fair, just, just fair enough to have the, the town or the city where they live at, just because the address just by itself doesn't tell a lot. For example, we had a lady that came in and spoke, you know, and she came, and she talked about, you know, my business, it had nothing to do with town council. She's from, renting from another place in another city, not even in the town of Christiansburg. And in the minutes, it was just, just the address, not the city. And so, that's all I want to make sure that, you know, that information is still provided.
So, you want to limit it to citizens of town Christiansburg?
No, 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 no. I'm just saying, just to make sure that, we say, living in other places, that, that information is there.
How about this, a checkbox, are you a town citizen after you put your address in there?
Yeah.
Whether or not they'll do it or not, but you know, Joanna, you, you have people that come to live in the county, and they address us personally as well, so it's a two-way street there.
Yeah.
So...
I'm just saying, it doesn't matter if they live in another city, I just want the city in there, too, if that's possible.
Well, you can live in the county and have a Christiansburg post office.
And it's fine, but I really like that, because for example, the lady's saying, you know, Falling Branch, and we have a Falling Branch road over here in Christiansburg as well, so it's cheap, you know?
Yeah, it's, it's one of those things, and so, Reed, can we, Randy, I'm going to ask Randy, I'm not paying you all that exorbitant salary to tell me yesterday. Randy, would you and Tracy get together and Andrew and do whatever research as far as the legalities of asking if they are a citizen of the town of Christiansburg on that list?
I don't want that, because there is a lot of people that don't live in the town of Christiansburg, but they pay tax, pay taxes here.
Yeah, I know.
All I wanted was just to, for them to mention where, where they, where they live.
Well, that's why I asked for their residential address. Okay. All right, thank you. We will take a look at this study. If you have comments or questions on this thing or suggestions...
I think Mr. Bishop hasn't spoken yet.
Hey.
No, I'm going to say...
Y'all have covered it well. As long as we're not going tonight, I can go with two weeks from now, because there are some things that I like to reiterate myself.
Yeah.
Well, I think in the interim of the next two weeks, I would like for you to, if there are questions about this document, if you would address those to Andrew and Randy or Tracy. I don't care, but, you know, let's, let's, if I go a week, we don't have, two weeks we won't have anything, then, okay, that's the document. So, let's see what we got.
Can I ask a question to Marc Sisson and see how he handles the thing about...
If he was here.
Do you leave?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, maybe Randy, you can ask him for the next meeting about, you know, coverage on the face and stuff like that.
I don't think there's much you can do with it, but...
No, but I, not to do something with it, but how he handles that, that's all.
We will, I, I, we will sit down with Mark and get a...
They can't handle it, he doesn't do anything. We had a gentleman tonight that we, we couldn't see anything except for a round space.
Actually, in his, I think in his, I think on Marc Sisson, I do think that he came over and looked at him several times. "So, hi, sir, we're talking about you."
There is a brief question, a brief answer about...
Can we, let's let Reed, I mean, ask him, Mark, one thing, let's let Reed look into it and then make a recommendation to us.
The situation of the mask and the hood, there's not, there's not much you can do there.
Well, let's, let's...
All right. Staff reports, anybody here from staff, Randy? Town manager report?
Got a few things for you. In regards to the other, the viewing room, we do have a notice posted on the wall now that there's a 30-second delay between the video in there and this room, so people will be aware, just so they're, like I say, kind of alert to the fact that if they want to come speak, they need to be kind of on it once the public comments come up, basically.
Okay.
I guess last council meeting had a question about the college street timeline and cost. We accepted the contract for the engineering services in October 15th of 2020. That contract amount was $78,480. We plan that, for that to be complete spring, we're hoping early April, April this year for final report presentation. Of course, that's, that's not construction. I've had, I guess, several people ask, "Is that construction?" No, it's not, that's simply the study. We do hope from the study, though, that we will be able to come up with projects that, that we can budget for and hopefully seek grants for. At the water and wastewater committee, we had a discussion regarding conservation easements, potential for Diamond Hills Park, and also our landfill at Wade's Lane. We've got areas that we determined that we would be, I guess, comfortable dedicating conservation easements for, and this would be to offset payments of, for water quality credits with construction of the park. If councils are agreeable with that, we'd go ahead and pursue that. I plan on putting that on the, the next council agenda, to place those in conservation easements. If you have any concerns, let me know.
Is it all in floodplain areas?
I can't say it all is, but a good deal.
The vast majority of it?
Yes.
I don't know how I'll fill it up.
It was a recommendation of the committee to...
Okay, great.
Reed?
Got, got a few more things.
Okay.
I'll just point out, the Dial-O-Live and Race Winter Summit's this Saturday from 10:00 to 11:30, you have it pre-registered. Also, I do plan on turning off comments on YouTube in, in regards to the comment from Manhouse. I think that was going to be a staff suggestion anyhow, so...
So, we don't need to take full relaxing on that?
You don't.
We can direct him to.
You know, you don't see the comments here during the meeting, so they're only part of the conversation, just to, for honesty, it's probably a little bit of distraction for people at home. Thank you, Randy, sure. And we had, I guess, requests to look at business licenses and also the potential for property taxes and vehicle registration fees. Wondering if we'd be open for a budget work session the first Tuesday in March, that'd be March 2nd. We'd also probably put on their community support applications for a work session. Would that work for all of you?
In the budget work session, are you going to specifically...
Would you rather have a finance committee meeting to, to deal with these? Probably a large discussion, though.
No, let's have it with everybody.
What was the date again, Randy?
March 2nd, that's first Tuesday, which are we talking about?
In this budget meeting, are you going to specifically address the subjects of personal property tax, these things?
Specifically, specifically these things, the business license fees in general, personal property tax and vehicle registration fees, and then also a discussion of community support applications.
Those, those, not the budget per se?
Not, not, not the budget whole.
They're not...
This is, this is basically a prelude to talking about the whole budget, though.
So, you have a way to look at it, okay.
Miss Saxon, does that address, you had an email out there about, or request out there, how's that?
It does.
What time would you prefer?
Is this a Zoom or in person?
I would, probably we do it in person. 6 o'clock?
Yeah, 6:00, I do prefer 6:00.
One second.
It's a Tuesday.
You know, if we'd like to pick it up earlier at 4:00, I'm, I'm open to that, knowing the past it was a little bit more difficult, but...
What do you say, Mr. Shaw, on this?
We're looking at...
I usually can't do until, I would usually prefer after 5:00, but if we can start earlier, like at 4:00, I'll make arrangements to...
I will, too.
Because I have a feeling this is going to be a two and a half, three-hour work session.
I would agree to 4:00, that sounds great.
Okay.
4:00 is good.
It's so difficult to do a high gun.
How about, how about we just leave it open? I mean, yeah, let's say 4:00 now, but we'll see if, we want, the whole point of work session is everybody there.
Well, the thing about it, we have to, you know, we have to advertise that thing, so, you know, do we stick to 5:00? Do, do we go to 6:00 as, as presented? So, we have, we have to have a, a time that we can publicly post that thing several days beforehand.
I think I will have to have a discussion, see, because, you know, with my family.
Okay, let's leave it at this, then I would like for each of you all within the next two days to contact Mr. Wingfield as to a time that you can commit to attending.
I know 6:00 would work. No, it's just that the 5:00 or 4:00.
5:00 or 4:00.
6:00 is fine.
6:00, same, 6:00.
I'm going with 6:00.
6:00.
Sorry for going to random. 6:00 would work, as always.
We will have another regular council meeting between now and then, so...
Can I, can I ask you something really quick, Randy? The community support applications, when do they go out again?
They're due February, so...
So, we are having these applications turn in even before we even have discussions about this.
Correct.
Because I have sent an email just thinking about, you know, we should have limits as far as how much money can some of, you know, all of them, you know?
I think that's going to be part of this discussion.
Well, but if we get the applications in February, and then we're talking in March...
It's February right now, so I think it's a little late for this year's budget to go back and tell them, yeah, cut off now. We should have told them this at the, at the beginning of last...
But I know that, I'm sure that they won't, the applications went out to, to the previous people that had applied for them. I think we have four that have come back, so they're out there.
I just want to know people, be aware that we're kind of in a budget crisis this year, and I feel like with coronavirus, with lodging taxes being low, with real, with rent, with restaurants being down, I think, just trying to help us be more conservative, maybe. And that's just, you know...
That's a decision at council.
Well, that's a personal decision.
It's our decision.
If you don't want to fund somebody, you can voice it, and you get...
We have fairly reasonable voting process.
But if we want to change the policy or put a sundown clause or a limit, that's something we should do right after we approve this year's budget, is put new policies into place, not at the last minute. Now, I understand what you're saying, but again, you will have your, your day to say, "I'm not going to do this because this," and I think you guys should go with me.
So, this, this is February the 9th, and they're due by the end of February?
No, they were due February 3rd.
Oh, well, we're good.
Okay, so we've done, and you say you got four applications?
No, we got more than that.
No, I, I, just, I've been identified for... No, I, I, just, I've been identified from advocates that they have sent, they've sent the thing in.
I was excited about it, we didn't have to do anything.
I would be excited about four, because these are organizations that need to help our citizens.
No, I understand.
Anything else, Reid?
That's all I've got.
Reid?
Randy, one, one question for Randy. The sign in the aquatic center, that the bid has gone out, or what is the latest status on that?
It, it is out to bid, I think we've actually accepted the bid on that. But I know it was bid out to bid and the bid's closed on it.
So we're thinking six weeks, we'll have it?
I, I would think so.
We'll see. Okay. Under council reports, Mr. Hubbard has asked to lead us off tonight.
Well, you know, last meeting, I put out about gun control and...
Don't want to get close to the mic, Steve.
And I think everybody saw the article in the paper on Sunday. And I want to clarify some of my comments. I have nothing against the Second Amendment, and I have nothing against people owning and having guns. That's not even in the game. But my point here is, there is a time and a place for everything. And I do not feel that here in council sessions, here in the town hall, any public building, that we don't need to have a person with a gun. And my clarification on that, even if you look at earlier in this meeting tonight, how things got a little bit hot. Sometimes, that can get out of hand, and if somebody's in the audience, they can do it that way. Now, I want to read two letters. I, I received probably more response from that article than I have ever had on gun control. And I realize that there are two sides to the coin. But here, here's one article here. "I'm a gun owner and I support the Second Amendment. However, I agree with you in limiting firearms in the town building." Here's another one. "I read with great interest the article in the Roanoke Times about your desire to mirror Blacksburg's new policies regarding weapons in town buildings. I wholeheartedly support you on this matter. I am also a professor at New River Community College and survived the shooting there in 2013. One gun made the worst day of my life. Since then, I have been a gun advocate. And sometimes, if we have guns, we can say, well, we should have corrected that when something happens, but that's a little bit too late. Now, I know I'm sort of riding the bus by myself right now, but this one I would like to present. That if, if, any, as we go around the table now, if anybody thinks that I have maybe some concrete idea, that I would be happy to make a little presentation concerning gun control at one of the meetings in March. And that's all I have."
Okay. Mr. Stipes?
I have no additional comment, thanks, Mayor.
Mr. Scholter?
No comment.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything. Well, you know, you know what I was hoping?
You had, you had your time.
Was just to say, make a comment here on...
We're not, we're not discussing, you made a comment.
Uh, you know...
But I mean, do you think it's, would you be interested in me doing something along the...
No, no, not at all.
I have no comment, this isn't part of the agenda.
Nope.
Ms. Sax?
Steve and I have had this conversation before, but we differ on gun control. And I respect his opinion completely, but I cannot support any measure that treads on our rights as far as Second Amendment.
Ms. Sax?
Well, since we're on gun, so... Criminals don't care about following rules or ordinances, just like they don't care about gun laws. And that's just my two cents about that, and I'm not for putting any restrictions on gun owners right now that obey the laws. Now, on another note, I was glad Deborah Epperty did us, I suggested during some of the past, I guess, parks and rec meetings in the past, and got help from Elisa Daman, providing resources in case people needed help. The community resource page looks great, and I am so thankful that that was put out there as a resource, not as a destination that is gonna, you're gonna find all the answers, but just as that resource place, that maybe that can help someone to get some help, so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, you know, to go on the, the gun, the, the issue, I, I, my concern is with the safety of our children that participate in Sandlot Sports or that go to the rec center and the parks. But I had a conversation with a gentleman today, and I expressed that, and I said, I know 95% of the people that have carry permits are very responsible, they're very professional, they know what the rules are. I said, it's the 5% that I worry about. And his comment to me was, hey, Mike, one of those 95% may prevent one of the 5% from doing any real damage. But I'm not, I'm not out to take away any kind of gun rights, gun controls or anything like that. I think that had we, had we decided this would be something that, for the town hall, I think we would have had a major expense, because we would have had to conduct it in the excavation. We would have had to, we would have had to staff it exactly like the courthouse. We'd have to have the machine, we'd have to have the conveyor belt, and we'd have to staff it with two or three people, eight hours a day, and I think that's an expense. That's an expense right now in this situation, I don't think we can bear. So I'm, I'm willing to just... Let this, this drop and not have it on a future agenda, if that's the agreement of council.
I agree with that, I think we need, there is so much going on in our country right now, our rights and everything else.
It's crazy, it's nuts.
I think we need to stop and just, you know, calm down, just, we, we don't need to bring more problems that we don't need to, to this town council, you know?
You think?
Okay, I guess, I mean, since this is now an agenda item, it seems like, tonight, because both the council members are talking about it. I would implore Mr. Hubbard to, I mean, we've heard about this probably every two or three months during our... What section is this again? Council reports?
Yes.
I would, I would, I would ask you, I know your passion about it, I respect that, that you're passionate about it, but, you know, this, nobody's ever decided to put this on the agenda or have it. We've already had several council members weigh in on an agenda item that wasn't even on the, here. I would encourage you just sort of let this go.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other business to come for council?
I have one, please.
Yes.
I just wanted to bring up to council that I'd like to discuss the time that we allow for presentations, so it's consistent, you know, perhaps max it out at 15 minutes or...
We'll try to do that, about three minutes.
About seven and a three-minute Q and A.
Yeah.
That is, that is difficult to do, and, and when we have people, when we have people coming, departments and other organizations coming, you know, Randy notifies them, you've got 10, 15 minutes at the max. And, you know, at the point, you know, and I time them and try to encourage them, but I, but I think in the future, you set it out, you got 15 minutes.
I would go 10. 10 minutes is about time.
I know we had discussed this in the past, I thought it was 10 minutes.
We said we would prefer...
Oh, there is not policy?
We would prefer to...
That would be an item that I would love to put on the agenda and see if we can just board on it, so it's fair for everyone that comes.
We could, we could state it right now, you want 10 minutes?
I love 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
10 minutes.
10 minutes is a max, Randy? If you would notify future people and department heads coming.
I do think if it's something that we've requested, like, for example, the park, it was a very large presentation, we could prepare for that, or we could put that in a work session.
Maybe have it two different sessions, maybe two town council meetings, so it's not so long.
I, I do use a little discretion, I'll give you an example, I did tell Reid to take, take longer than 10 minutes if he felt he needed it for his presentation because of the subject matter, but...
And there was a lot of coverage.
Outside presentations, I do tell them to try to limit it to 10 minutes.
Well, I'm not supposed to talking about the, I, I'm not talking about the outside organizations coming, because usually when we have a presentation by somebody from a department, it's on something we have asked them for, to do, or a general synopsis of how their year has been. And I think that's important to do, but I do think, you know, I, I, I think the suggestion to all is 10 minutes.
Oh, absolutely.
The suggestion.
And not try, we want it limited to 10 minutes.
And this, this isn't only for us, we, you know, we're here to listen in it, but, you know, it's all, these presentations are for the people at home. And what's the average attention span?
Three minutes.
Well, I don't know, a lot of presentation, I usually put a pizza in the oven before they come back and watch the rest. Tracy, would you go out to bar and get me an egg timer?
I really would.
I don't want to be rude, but I can do that. All right. Anything else? We good? We are adjourned, 9:17. 10 p.m.
And Reid, your presentation is too long, 15.
It's boring.
That's a work session.
It's boring.
That's a work session.
I think they're running through it all quickly.